Welcome to a meeting of your Planning Commission, the official local planning agency for the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Plant City, and unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Planning Commission provides innovative leadership and long-range vision that contributes to the creation of a thriving prosperous community that offers opportunity, fairness, and choice in how we live, move, learn, work, and play. For more information about the Planning Commission, please call 813-272-5940. Follow us on social media or visit our website at planhillsborough.org.
Good evening and welcome to the October 8th, 2018 Public Hearing of the Planning Commission on Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendments. We thank you for attending the meeting. Your comments and participation are encouraged. If you will, please sign the register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. And if you wish to address the Commission on a specific amendment, we ask that you please complete the appropriate public comment signing sheet at the rear of the room now. When addressing the Commission, please begin with your name and address and speak directly into the microphone. And for those who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. Agenda item will be introduced and staff will give a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity also to make a presentation with a 15-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Commission when recognized by the Chair, and public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will then be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal or response. Planning Commissioners will ask questions. Public comment will be closed, and upon a motion, a second discussion of vote will be taken. Could we have roll call, please?
Good evening. Dix?
Here.
Green?
Present.
Joseph?
Here.
Press?
Here.
Marino?
Here.
Crower?
Here.
Wilds?
Here.
Dickerson?
Lorraine Duffy-Souares, alternate for Amber Dickerson.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Doughty?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is HCPA 1809 Future Land Use Amendment. This amendment has been withdrawn, so we will not be hearing it. Brings us to the second item, HCPA 18-10 Future Land Use Text Amendment, and this amendment has requested a continuance. We need to have a motion by the Board to either, well, to accept the continuance request to the next cycle.
Some motion?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Joseph and a second by Commissioner Wilds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye. Aye, those opposed. Motion carries unanimously by members present. Brings us to item, actually, it's number four, HCPA 1811 Future Land Use Amendment. Mr. Krancheck, is he not here? Yes, he is.
Good evening, Commissioners. Randy Krancheck, Planning Commission staff, here to discuss with you Comprehensive Plan Amendment 18-11, Causeway Boulevard and 86th Street. There, you can see it on the aerial outlined in pink. It's approximately 34 acres in size. You see, I just want to point some things out before I go on. This is a large drainage canal here on this project's north side. And there is also a Tico, some Tico lines that run through the site as well. Here, you can see it. It's in the central part of the county, in the Palm River Community Planning Area. It is in the urban service area, and it's privately initiated amendment to the Future Land Use map. The area is suburban and urban in scale. Here, you see a photo of Causeway Boulevard. The site is over in this area here. Here, you can see the, some of the Tico towers and whatnot, the Tico structures. So the current category, future land use category is residential nine. We see that predominantly along the north side of the street. We do have some mixed-use categories over here, some CMU 12. On the south side of the street, we have office commercial 20, which allows for intense commercial and up to 20 units per acre. And then you see some more residential nine as well. So there's a few land use categories in this area. They are requesting a residential 20, which allows up to 20 units per acre. So the impacts of that would be an increase in dwelling units up to 690 from a current maximum potential of 310 under the residential nine. They don't meet locational criteria, but both categories, the nine and the 20, allow up to 175,000 square feet of non-residential development. The residential 20 has the potential for higher flora ratio with mixed-use development. So just some photos. This is property on the east side of 86th Street. Again, this is looking west on Causeway Boulevard. Used car lot or car dealership here on the east side of 86th, and then subject site on the west side. And then again, property on the south side of Causeway. And again, you see the Tico power lines running through this area. Relative to agency reviews, we had no agency objections. The school board did note that Spoto High would be over capacity with this proposed change in density by a slight number of students. Well, the middle and elementary schools would not. They would still have capacity remaining. I did talk with the city of Tampa, because this is their service area at this time, and they do have water and sewer available to this site. So from a consistency finding, in the Future Land Use Amendment, objective one in the Future Land Use Amendment calls for the direction of 80% of new growth into the urban service area. And policy 16.13 speaks to locating higher densities along major roadways, collectors and arterials. Causeway Boulevard is an arterial roadway. The livable communities element and the Greater Palm River Community Plan encourages and supports new infill and redevelopment compatible with the existing community. And again, this parcel, being that it fronts on Causeway with that large drainage canal behind it, provides a good separation to the single family further to the north than you have 86th. You have some of those Tico lines. So staff feels that this is a suitable site for higher density. The Greater Palm River Community Plan also calls for, among other things, support of housing choice and affordability, creating walkable neighborhoods. These are in the slide show here. There's more policies and objectives that were cited in your report and in the resolution. So given that, the Planning Commission staff finds Comprehensive Plan Amendment 18-11 consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated county, and I'll be glad to try to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Krancheck, is the applicant here. Do they wish to make a presentation?
Yes, they do.
I have a PowerPoint, just a quickie.
Did you bring it?
Yeah, there it is. It's right there.
Okay.
Thank you. Excellent. Good evening. I'm Kevin Manier, and I'm assisting the Kearney family in the possible redevelopment of their commercial property in the Palm River area. I appreciate Randy's presentation, your staff working with us, as well as all the reviewing agencies which reviewed it and are recommending approval. I just would like to spend a couple of minutes and maybe add a few more comments, and I'll just move through these real quick. Randy is correct. Even though it seems like it's a deep property, all the property on the north is drainage easements and Tico power lines and/or occupied by an existing mini warehouse, which isn't going anywhere. So if we do do a multifamily project, it'll all be down, oops, it'll all be down here. The Comprehensive Plan doesn't really reflect the current situation along Causeway, because it's a well-used intensive commercial corridor with heavy commercial zonings on both sides of the street. The commercial nature of the corridor is reflected, however, with the current zoning map. Our property is zoned general commercial today, which allows a full range of commercial uses. And our neighbors to the east, west, and south are also zoned commercial today on both sides of Causeway. These uses range from heavy auto repair and construction equipment, storage lots, to warehousing and distribution. These are our neighbors. Our neighbor to the east is a car dealership and car repair shop. Our neighbor to the west is a construction, storage lot, construction project. And to the south, we have a very large distribution center. Here's a wider view of the entire corridor. Most of the parcels on Causeway are zoned for commercial or industrial uses today. My research indicates the closest multifamily approved zoning is at the corner of US 301 and Causeway, which is about 3,000 feet to the east. We are consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, which includes multiple policies and encourage infill in urban service areas with higher densities when compatible. And we do believe that we're compatible. And they also encourage infill in lieu of strip commercial development. We're zoned commercial today, and if we are allowed to do this, it would be a nice infill project. We're also consistent with the Palm River Community Plan, which encourages infill and redevelopment where compatible. And the community plan, as Randy has stressed, also promotes greater housing choice and affordability, which we can provide. Finally, I need to mention the upgrades to the water in the sewer systems that the county paid for and constructed in 2005 to encourage redevelopment in the Palm River area. They spent $5.5 million right in front of our property along Causeway when they widened Causeway to provide extra capacity to encourage new development in the Palm River area. The county has expended that money and gave that line to the city, because it's within the city urban service area. So in conclusion, we feel we're consistent, compatible. Infrastructure is in place for redevelopment projects for underutilized commercial properties like ours. And I can answer questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Manier. Before we go to any questions from Commissioners, I don't have anybody signed up to speak on this particular agenda item, but I will ask, is there anyone in the general public who wishes to address the Commission? Please come forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Karen Mahowski, 7903, West Whitewater Court, Tepa, Florida, 33607. I'd like to point out a couple of things. I appreciate the infill of the urban service area, and I appreciate increasing density and affordable housing. A couple of things that I would like to point out, that I would urge the Planning Commission to request, is the transit. So there are no transit, and if this is going for affordable lines, they're going to have to cross the Causeway, walk a half mile to get to only one bus line that would then take them to downtown. And if I can show this, I don't know how to use this, though. Okay, so I'm going to say, I'm going to show my finger, and then we'll kind of go back and forth, okay? Okay, that's the bus line, and that is going up is 78th Street. And so there's nothing on the Causeway. So they would have to cross over the Causeway, walk a half mile, and get there. So as we're thinking safety and we're thinking vision zero, I would urge that the applicant should think of these as opposed to, we have crisis and we have death, or pedestrians getting hit trying to get there. And if this is being presented as affordable housing, then you're not going to have, you're going to be having residents that don't have cars and that are going to require transit or need that transit option. So I would urge that the Planning Commission look into this. I'm not sure if this is the position, or if there isn't, then please inform me where I can present this request. I think this should be something, as we're doing smart growth, that we are thinking transit and we're thinking other optional ways. Okay? Then the other is, oops, oops. I believe that the traffic is going to be going to the back road. I don't have a picture of that really handy. And so now, how is that going to be affecting that road? Is now we're going to create another higher, we're going to degrade that level of service for that community? And again, is this being a burden that's going to be on the county or on the city as opposed to, you know, thinking through this development and making it a successful that residents can move in and there isn't going to be massive congestion? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to address the Commission on this agenda item? Okay. Are there any questions from Commissioners? Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. Mr. Manier, do you wish three minutes for rebuttal?
If I may, I have a copy of the Hartline map. We actually have two lines very close to us. She is right. The 301 line is a little distance away, but the line that runs down 78th is about 1,300 feet to the west. So we actually have a line on the west side, a line on the east side. And then if you look at the correspondence that Tico, or not Tico, Hartline prepared, they're considering re-looking at Causeway and see what they may need to do in the future. So I believe that in the future, this will become a transit line. I didn't say that we would necessarily be affordable housing. What I did say is that we're going to be a variety of, we are going to provide for more housing options. As it is right now, there are no housing options necessarily within, on the Causeway strip or the Causeway corridor. So we believe that we're providing more opportunities, which is meeting the Palm River Plan. And then if I could, go back to my map. We have no connection to this neighborhood to the north, none whatsoever. This is 82nd, and it dies at the drainage easement. So all of our traffic will be out onto Causeway Boulevard, a road that currently operates at acceptable levels of service. So it's like, I think it's a great reuse of a piece of property that is designated, zoned for a huge range of commercial uses today, and would be a nice alternative use. And the plan has multiple policies that encourage this kind of redevelopment. And it would be a nice first connection to the $5.5 million sewer and water lines that they ran right out front when they widened the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manier. I'd like to ask the clerk, is there, I guess the lights aren't working, but is the timer working? Okay. Great. Now, are there any questions from Commissioners on this particular item? Commissioner Dix?
Mr. Krancheck?
Yes.
I appreciated your pointing out about the canal drainage. That was a concern. Makes it a great buffer in the back. That's terrific. It appears to me, and I just wanted to make certain I'm correct, it appears to me that this particular piece of property actually has two areas of access, one off of Causeway and one off of 86th. Is that right?
Yes.
Because I had heard, it kind of disturbed me, that all of our traffic would be going out of Causeway, but I guess it could go out of 86th as well, depending on the site plan.
Yes, sir. And if, depending on how county transportation would review this at a time of rezoning, depending upon the number of trips that are determined to arise as a result of the project, they could very well and may very well require an entrance on 86th, and also then they could and may very well would require that part of 86th to be improved if it's substandard, at least to the entrance point.
And obviously, my concern for asking that question is because if we're increasing the density to the magnitude that you were describing and which the documents certainly portray, then it always makes sense to me to have two exits and entry points for safety, for the neighborhood, et cetera.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Randy, I just had a question. I don't know if Kevin can address this, but I was just curious. You've got a, almost, well, probably a little bit wider than 200-foot wide Tico easement, utility easement running right through your property, right?
There is that easement running in this, I guess we'd call it a northwesterly fashion, then it kind of straightens out down here as it runs south.
And essentially, it constrains you in terms of where you can actually build on the site. So everything north of that, as you said, the mini warehouse, the mini storage place isn't going to change. So you've got about a quarter of your property that's not usable. My question has to do with what's achievable in terms of overall unit count, and I'm just sort of curious. How does?
Okay. So, given that, the mini storage part of the site would be lessened out. The, relative to a density calculation, let's say that sits on two acres of the 34 acres, so you're calculating 32 acres worth of density. I don't know how, quite how we'd handle the easement based upon how it's worded and whatnot with Tico, because we, maybe the executive director can help me out here, but we don't get a lot where we get large swaths that run right through a property. Usually, we're talking contiguous.
And then you have setbacks from the easement itself. Is that correct?
Yeah. So I understand where you're going on this, and given that, it wouldn't quite be then 690 units.
Right.
Okay. So what they, you know, they certainly, yeah, and then all of it would need to be up there fronting Causeway, because there just isn't any room in the back. And from a compatibility standpoint with the single family, that's a good thing.
Okay. Okay, I was just curious.
I would agree. I think it depends to some degree what the easement language is, whether or not some of that density from that could be shifted to the other part of the property, whether Tico would permit that. So that's probably a question for Mr. Manier.
I've been informed by the owner, we own that land. There's an easement on it, but we own the land. So our goal is to put ponds, parking, anything that we can under the power lines, and to put buildings where we can put buildings. But the key thing, you're absolutely right with the drainage and the Tico easements, it really sets us back from the, really, the only thing that we need to keep an eye on, make sure it's compatible, the single-family houses. I mean, our neighbors are pretty heavy commercial uses, and we feel we're a much more benign use than really what we're zoned for today. So we think it's a good fit.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Joseph?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is Causeway Boulevard recognized in the community plan as a focus for density intensification or future development or channeling any sort of?
Nodes of Causeway are, for instance, 78th Street, 301 and Causeway. Nodes are, there are focus nodes in the community plan for more intensity, both residential and non-residential. There are numerous policies in the plan, though, that do call for the higher intensities and densities along the major corridors, regardless of node, so.
Okay. And is, in the county's side of it, are there any, what's the long-range, are there any long-range construction funds for Causeway in the budget, or is?
Causeway's just been improved. Just recently been improved, and that's where those infrastructure lines come in as a result of that. All that was done during the widening of Causeway.
So there's sidewalks and bike lanes on both sides of the road for safety and things like that?
It's got sidewalks on both sides and bike lanes. And what Kevin said, and the member of the public said, we considered that in our review relative to transit or lack thereof, and it's what comes first, the chicken or the egg kind of thing. We know heart goes up and down with their funding issues. They pulled transit back recently, but in order to have transit, you need to have the people there. And right now, Causeway has a lot of marginal uses along it because of the lack of infrastructure that existed for so long. So what you saw was a lot of used car dealerships, open storage type uses, small strip centers, et cetera, et cetera, that really didn't need public water and sewer to locate. So now that it's there, I think in general, we're going to see more requests for higher usage along Causeway.
Okay, that's what I was kind of getting at there with that. Thank you. Thank you both.
All right, and I have a question or request from you, too. I'm curious, I've seen a few things, the discussion of Causeway just recently being improved, the drainage easement in the back, the Tico easement along the side, that give me some of the reasons for it. But I'm trying, can you explain a little more about the issues like that that are consistent with the plan that show? My concern was just putting an R20 in the middle of a bunch of R9. And there are some reasons here that it's being basically constrained on a bunch of sides so that it's able to do that, but can you expound on that a little bit?
Yeah. Well, I mean, again, Palm River in general is an area of the county that's almost like was the donut hole, the hole in the donut. You know, it's, there's no services there. There's a lot of vacant land still left in Palm River to a degree. It was historically an area of small farms, and then given the fact that Causeway, up until just recently, was still a two-lane road, we just didn't have the types of services that one would expect in an urban area. And there still aren't in many parts of Palm River. We have substandard roadways. We have a lack of public water and sewer. So as the water and sewer moves into that area in general, we're going to see a change. Now, the residential nine probably reflects some of the smaller lots that existed in that general area and in that corridor from way back in the day, because again, Palm River was such a mixture of small farms, some large lot developments, some very small lots that, almost to the extent before Hillsborough County, really had good regulations. So the R9 was put there. But again, it's very close, it's a 10-minute drive to downtown at best, and staff sees that as an area that's going to transition, you know, both residentially and non-residentially.
Okay. Mr. Joseph?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a question for our executive director. It seems like our county future land use map doesn't reflect like the small community kind of things, because I don't see like the nodes on our future land use map, which is kind of the reason why we have this coming before us, right? In a certain sense, but?
Yes, I would say the change along Causeway has not been reflected in any sort of land use study or anything to look at whether or not Res 9 is still the appropriate land use corridor, given the infrastructure improvements that have been made in that area. Additionally, when the community plans were created, it was originally envisioned that there would be further studies that would come along and implement some of those pieces. For example, maybe a study of 78th Street and some of the development along there, because there's a lot of commercial that's not really reflected in the residential nine land use category. And some of, many of those community plan implementation activities have not come to fruition.
Is there, is this a one-off situation here, or do we need to look at the way our future land use is correlating with other community plans around the county? I guess would be my next question. If there's also a disconnect in all of them?
Well, I don't know that there's a disconnect in all of them. I would say that... I would say that this corridor in particular, because of the change in infrastructure that occurred, as well as the community plan, has sort of amplified a disconnect here. So this amendment coming in certainly is, we hope, indicative of a trend of how the corridor might transform, and something that we need to be taking a look at. So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners?
I know staff had commented on the school district's comment that we have insufficient capacity at Spoto High School, which is the area that serves this. Obviously, this test doesn't take place, the concurrency test doesn't take place, until they get down to the commercial site plan, so they still have to go through zoning. There's a lot of steps, but I feel like I should say on the record right now to let the applicants know, that we have some capacity issues in the general South County area. Doesn't mean we couldn't maybe change a boundary, but even right around Spoto, Blake High School is full, Brandon High School is pretty much the only school that we have some capacity at, that this could, we could possibly make a change to, but by the time they get to that point, you can't guarantee that's going to happen. So I think, and when Ms. Dickerson is back here, I'm sure she's going to start reminding you of these issues, so if people are aware, we're already having to stop some plating processes since last year, until we can get some capacity lined up, so everyone should be aware.
Thank you, Ms. Suarez. Commissioner Powell.
On the improvements for widening the road and for the upgrade to the water system, did we have a study done that said why we were doing that? Was it for future residential development, or was it just to accommodate? I know there's a lot of commercial and industrial businesses over there, was it for that purposes?
Yeah, go for it. Causeway was widened out in that area, I think primarily for the port, because it connects to 41, you get all of that traffic. Also, with the connector coming off of I-4, that whole area was improved sort of at once, and that's a direct line into the port and out of the port. Because Lumpston to the east had already been widened to four and six lanes, so here you had Causeway as two-lane, but it was more, it was as much of a port improvement off-site as anything.
And I think they took advantage of the timing of widening the road to upgrade the water and sewer, because Palm River has historically had this issue of being located in the city of Tampa service area, but not having water and sewer service from the city of Tampa. That actually, in the community plan, is the number-one issue that the community identified, was they wanted to get water and sewer service in their area, and so that's been happening, and so I think the timing of the road widening, the county took advantage of that, because it was, it's a state road, so the state did the widening, I think.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? Public comment will be closed, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move for finding of consistency for Hillsborough County Compliment Amendment 18-11.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Green and a second by Commissioner Thrower. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, announced by members present. Thank you. Brings us to item number five on our agenda, Comprehensive Plan Amendment 18-12. Ms. Kelly.
Good evening, Krista Kelly, Planning Commission staff. I'm presenting CPA 1812. This site is located on the west side of Kings Avenue, north of Lumpston and south of State Road 60. It's a privately initiated map amendment in the urban service area and within the Brandon community planning area. This is an aerial of the site to give you a sense of the context of the plant amendment site. Currently, it's developed as a driving range with a pro shop, batting cage, that type of recreational activity, that's why there's a big open space for the driving range. It abuts a shopping center to the south. There are villas to the south as well. The intersection is quite intense, and as you go west on Lumpston, it becomes much more urbanized. On the east side of Kings Avenue, it is very suburban and established residential area. Okay, these are photos submitted by the applicant, just showing what you would see if you were driving down Kings Avenue. The one on the left is you're looking from the southern boundary of the site, the one on the right is looking the opposite direction. The adopted future land use map designates the site Residential 12. The site is surrounded by Residential 12 to the north, south, and west, and there is some mixed use to the northwest. The applicant is proposing a change to Residential 20, which is a dark brown. As we discussed at the workshop, it seems to pop out as inappropriate, however, it is very reflective of the intense development node at Lumpston and Kings. Impact of this change would add additional 133 dwelling units, for a total of 333 dwelling units. It's capped at 175 square feet of non-residential, and the FAR would increase from .50 to .75. Staff reviewed it for consistency with the comprehensive plan and finds that it's consistent with the county's growth management strategy to direct growth in the urban service area. It appears to be compatible, because it's adjacent to very intense uses, and I meant to mention, to the north, there's a rehab center, which is also quite intense and compact. It's also within the Brandon community planning urban general district, which provides for multifamily development. It was distributed for agency review, no objections were received. The Transportation Department for the county noted that it would add an additional 1,006 trips, but does not exceed the adopted level of Service D. There is transit in the area. Transit is available via Flex Brandon and the 25 LX. Based on these findings, Planning Commission staff recommends that CPA 1812 be found consistent with the comprehensive plan. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Is the applicant here, and do they wish to make a presentation?
Good evening, Clayton Bricklemyer, Bricklemyer Law Group. I just, we've got our team with us tonight. We've got the developer in the back, that you probably can't see. We have our transportation engineer, Steve Henry, right here. We have our civil engineer, and more importantly than me, we have our planner, Alexis Crespo, who I'm now going to let speak.
Good evening, Alexis Crespo with Waltrip Engineering, representing the applicant. I do have just a few brief slides to walk you through. I want to start by thanking staff, Ms. Kelly, for her presentation recommendation. We are in agreement with staff regarding the application's consistency with the goals, objectives, and policies of the county comprehensive plan. We are seeking the Res. 20 future land use category to allow for infill redevelopment of the current golf course driving range on the subject property. This area is well-served by urban levels of public infrastructure, it's well within the urban service area, as directed by your comprehensive plan. This is where you want to cluster higher-density, intensity development, which is directly supported by the request before you today. This is also directly in compliance with the adopted goals, objectives, policies within your Brandon community plan. Ms. Kelly noted, this is in the urban general area of that community plan, which calls for higher-density dwelling types, such as townhomes, multifamily, which would be supported by the request. Also of note, the county's currently working on the pilot study for the corridors within Brandon, and looking at really ways of encouraging intensive mixed-use development in these areas, and we have reviewed that, we understand it's not an adopted document, we certainly want to put that on the record this evening, that this request is very consistent with key nodes planned for this area. This aerial is tough to see, it's kind of just more the context of the area, you can see the roadway network with I-75, Lee Rose Salmon Expressway, State Road 60 to the north. This area is very well-served by that network. We do have access to transit through the Hart Flex Line, which runs along Lumpston to the south and east of the property, or east of the property, yes. And then, the other thing that I wanted to note in terms of the aerial is really getting into compatibility. We do have some folks here from the neighboring community, LaViva. We do certainly respect their concerns and have met with them, and compatibility will largely be addressed through our companion plan development zoning, which we understand is outside the purview of the Planning Commission. Similar to the previous project, we do have a large wetland area in the west side of our site, which is going to provide just that natural buffering of the proposed multifamily units from the villa development within LaViva to the south. So we do have that natural buffer, and we are working closely with the community to develop additional conditions as part of that PD, such as building separation, setback from the property line, buffers and things of that nature. So understand that not necessarily taken up tonight, but it's important to note, and also, I want to put on the record, because we have met with them, and we are limiting our density to 300 dwelling units, so that they know I was honest in that representation, whereas obviously, Res. 20 can get up to 333 units. So with that, our team is available to discuss any details you'd like regarding the request, and again, we would respectfully request your recommendation of approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crespo.
Sorry, she did such a nice job. I actually have almost nothing to add, except we did get, it's sort of in a weird format, and I'll hand it to the clerk, the retail to the south of us directly attempted to support us, and sent an email through some sort of county that didn't work. He tried to send it to Commissioner Merman, and it didn't go through. I have a picture of it that he sent, but we do have support of the retail to the south, which I think is consistent with the fact that this is an infill project. They're excited about the additional rooftops effectively, that would be able to walk to the establishments of that retail at that pretty intensive node. Now we're available for questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Bricklemyer. Before we move to any questions, I have a couple of people signed up to speak in public comment. I have Laura Ross come forward.
Laura Ross, 702 Loma Linda Court. I first would like to thank you all for your service to this county. We appreciate all the time and effort that you've put in to look after the best interests of this community. I'm here to speak, not opposing the development of the community that we're speaking about, but opposing the density increase. Going from 180 to 300 units carries some inherent problems. Number one, the increase in traffic, because of the, it's already heavily trafficked, we're going to have additional traffic accidents resulting in destruction of property and probably even death. I've been told we can't put, they can't put a stoplight there in, but there's one down on Bloomingdale, the same distance from Bell Shoals, so I'm a little confused about that We have concerns about the wetlands, and how the water is going to drain into it, and is it going to flood our homes. By the way, my home is the closest to the development property in our community of LaViva. I'm close enough that I get golf balls through the cage of my pool, so I am very close. I can throw a softball, and trust me, I'm not a softball player, from the back of my house onto the property. I don't know about what the vehicular study says, or if it's even been done, but the increase in traffic, the increase in possible criminal activity, but all are concerns in the wetlands. And another one is that Larry Hurd, who owns that LaViva Plaza, how's he going to feel when people want to avoid that corner of going south on Kings and turning west on Lumpston, decide to cut through the parking lot and bypass that little, you know, take a little jog that way? I don't think he's going to be real pleased about that. He certainly would be pleased with the increased traffic, and so would we. We want the community around us to thrive, but we do not want destroyed what has already been established in the community there, and not just LaViva, but the property north of us, the property east of this complex are well-established. They are not a density of 18, a density of 9, 10, it's already approved for 12, but 18 is going to have a major negative impact on that community. I don't know about the schools, I don't know about the traffic, but I do know that the increase in traffic is going to be disastrous, and I know that it's not in line with what is existing there. We have one- and two-story buildings, we're talking about all four stories. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. I have a Gene Watford.
Good evening, my name is Gene Watford. I'm the president of the Homeowner Association for LaViva. I live at 701 Dorado Court. Again, I'd like to say the same thing. Laura did, thank you for this position, that you're holding a very important position. I attended a transportation study that Hillsborough County put on at the Regency several months ago, and at that time, they were talking about taking a turn lane out of Bloomingdale Avenue to increase traffic in one direction during certain hours. Bloomingdale, Lumpston, and 60 were the main east-west corridors. That died. Lumpston is a terrible street during certain hours. You can't make a turn off of Kings going east in the mornings, because people are running the traffic lights coming off of Lumpston heading north. Somebody in their infinite wisdom approved a wetlands to build a racetrack gas station at the corner of Lumpston and Kings. I don't know what's happened, but nobody's done anything now for quite a while, and I understand there's no entrance off of Kings into that gas station. I have seen so many rear ends, one person killed at that corner. You're just going to contribute to that traffic situation when you go to an R-20. I heard someone on the board mention on the previous presentation, was there only one entrance and exit out of the development they were talking about? They're only talking about one entrance and an exit out of this development. People will not be able to get out during certain hours. I live three-tenths of a mile away from a Jet's pizza place. If I go down there about 5:00, I can't drive, I have to drive, because that's one section of Lumpston that doesn't have sidewalks. I don't know why, but they don't have sidewalks. I can get a pizza, but I got to drive two and a half miles to get back to my house, because I have to go back around the Brandon Parkway, Paul's, Oakville, Kings, get caught in that traffic, and get back. This is a situation that's out there. I don't know what the traffic engineer said, that it's a D-study, but he's not out there during certain hours. The other thing is the drainage. I see from the plans that are being presented, there's to be a pond in the middle of the buildings.
I'm going to need you to wrap it up.
Pardon?
I'm going to need you to wrap it up.
Okay. That pond, the drainage now, that has an outfall to the west into those wetlands, and we get raising water back behind our houses. That pond's not going to do any good for that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't have anybody else signed up to speak, but is there anyone else in the public who wishes to address the commission?
Karen Molsky, 7903 West Whitewater Court, Tampa, Florida, 33637. I'd like to... Karen Molsky, 7903, West Whitewater Court, Tampa, Florida, 33637. I'd like to also agree with the previous two public residents, safety. So how are they going to be getting to the transit? And that flex is going to be ending because FDOT gave us a grant. So there's not going to be transit in the area, so you're creating density, and it's going to be car required. And as everyone's saying, this is a high-traffic, high-congestion. So if anyone were to walk, how safe is it going to be? Again, the burden shouldn't be on the county to make things safe, and we shouldn't have desks to then require change. We should be thinking forward, and we should be changing to the direction of, hey, we have to start requiring this of our development. The other thing is, is that this is going to be a 20. Right next to it is a Res 1, according to your own map. That means this is now going to be setting precedent that you can have a 20 in a Res 20 nearby, across the street. So we're setting precedent by putting in a 20. This is a big change that is going to permanently set precedent that another developer is going to be able to say, hey, you did it for them. I have rights. I want it for me. So I want you all to be thinking on the consequences. Yes, we want infill. Yes, we want it, but it should be at a gradient, and it should be smart. It should be having schools, having safety, having the road capacity, having transit, so that we are starting to think smart, like the Urban Land Institute has presented and has urged the Planning Commission to start planning smart growth, so that the burden doesn't come on the taxpayers, and it doesn't come on the county for all of these problems. Or we're not constantly the, what, the number-one county for our size of pedestrian deaths. I really would like for you to be thinking of these while you're making these decisions. These are precedent-ing, I don't know if that's a word or not, you know, decisions that you are reviewing, and that the safety of residents who's coming in there, everyone's going to be thinking, hey, this is a place to live, and it's close to my work. Are they going to be thinking safety for their children? Are they going to be thinking it is okay to send my child to go get that Jets pizza and walk by? Or are they going to have a horrible thing? And then you're going to be having people come to you and saying, why, 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 why? Why was this approved? And at that point, nothing can be done because it already is. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to address the commission on this particular agenda item? Mr. Brickmeyer, you'd have three minutes for rebuttal.
I think since the bulk of that was traffic, I actually was going to turn it over and let Steve Henry, Transportation Engineer, sort of do a quick rebuttal.
Good evening. Steve Henry, Links and Associates, 5023, West Laurel, Tampa, 33607. Just wanted to address the traffic very quickly. From one standpoint, again, as indicated, we've also submitted a PD. So in looking at the traffic in comparison to the units that we're asking for in the PD versus what could be built on the site today, it's about 41 additional PM peak hour trips, which is about 2% of the capacity of Kings and about 1% of the capacity of Lumston. So we're talking about a very insignificant increase in traffic in the area. So from that standpoint, we don't think that this, the increase, is going to have any significant impact on the traffic in the area. Also, we have looked at, and have submitted with the zoning, an analysis of the driveway and looking at turn, whether turn lanes are warranted, and if they're warranted, how long those turn lanes need to be. And that's being reviewed as a part of the PD for the project. Thank you.
Thanks. I think in general, I would just say that the pattern of development shows that west of Kings Avenue is different than east of Kings Avenue. No one's here to say any different. And that this infill project is very appropriate for where it's going, and that Res 20 is what it takes to get to Res 18. And I don't really want to get into the zoning, but I do think there are, the drainage concerns we heard, the criminal activity concerns we've heard, a lot of the traffic, we will be able to deal with through our PD. We've met with these folks a couple times already. I know we've set a meeting to go walk the boundary, to talk about the wetland. We can kind of work toward those things. What we're asking you all for is a consistency finding that we can get the density that we need for the site. And the team is available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brickmeyer. Okay, are there any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Green, your light's on. Does that mean you don't?
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Joseph.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to reiterate again to our executive director that this looks like another case to me where our future land use isn't quite jiving with what a community plan is kind of looking out forward to. If I understood Ms. Kelly's presentation correctly, this intersection is a node of desired future high-density.
It's a district, the urban general district, and so it calls for higher densities and intensities in that area.
Okay. Yeah, if I look at the future land use map, it looks pretty low-dense around the area. So I don't know, and we'll talk about this more, you know, dealing with these sorts of things, this disconnect. But I guess the Brandon Community Plan might be another area to look at for that. And I also wanted to ask, is there a, what goes on in the PDs outside of our purview, but I wanted to know if there's some sort of link between our organization and developmental services by which they can understand, you know, when we go to, and what, urban village area, do you call it?
Yeah, urban general district.
Urban general district, that we're going to need to see a certain type of development go in there, dealing with future things that we want to see, not necessarily the things that we have there now. Do our two organizations have that relationship?
Yes, absolutely. And the, because our organization participates and reviews all of the rezoning applications for consistency with the comprehensive plan, we'll be looking for those elements of the Brandon Community Plan, urban general district, to be reflected in the PD that is brought forward. I did want to mention that in this area, we, you all may recall, end of last year, we concluded a Brandon corridors and node study specifically looking to further implement the community plan. And we've been working with Development Services and the Public Works Department of the county as they've taken that work, which outlined a series of policy changes and potentially different nodes that would be identified on the future land use map. They're doing a Phase 2 to test the reality of that work in one specific area just north of here, around the, sort of the hospital district going over to what's called Brandon Main Street, which is all sort of just off the maps to the north and west of this. So that's something we're still very actively in the process of implementing, but it's, I think that study was an example of what you've been talking about, about the land use and transportation being looked at together, and it just hasn't moved all the way through the implementation stages yet.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dix.
Ms. Kelly, can I get your comment? In the recommendation for consistency, you know, you indicated in there that it should be found consistent, particularly with the neighborhoods, and that it would be compatible with the other neighborhoods in the other area, and a statement on safety as well. So I was wondering if you might address the concern and issue that I have about increasing the density from 12 to 20, albeit that the applicant has indicated they'll limit that to 300 units. Nonetheless, still, 300 units is a large number of cars exiting out on one roadway, which is Kings, particularly in the event of some urgent evacuation, some hazard, some disaster, et cetera. And that's always a concern that I have when we increase the density of properties such as this. So I was hoping you might could address that, because I noticed also in your comments that while the traffic would not necessarily degrade Kings, as the applicant's traffic engineer had indicated, and I appreciate that, there's also indication in there that the signalization at Kings and Lumston is already at a level of F. So increasing the density in that property to this extent is only going to worsen that. And again, my biggest concern is having only the one entrance and exit to this particular property.
Yeah, I understand your point, and it's kind of a unique location because it's sandwiched between two urbanizing areas. And again, it's within that radius of that commercial node. So falling in line with the community plan and our growth management strategy to infill these areas, that's how we came to our consistency finding. But you do make a good point about the access. That's something that's addressed at development review and
No? No? Anybody other Commissioners have questions? I actually will ask a question. I live out here in the Brandon area, and I can, maybe I'll apologize to Ms. Ross because one of my golf balls may have found its way into your pool at some point in time. But I can empathize with the residents and their discussion of the traffic situation. I mean, I've lived in Brandon since I was six years old, and there are certain times of day where it just takes forever to get through there. Lumston can be a nightmare at times, and Kings can be a nightmare at times. So I asked a question in the previous plan amendment, and I'll ask the one again. I mean, what items do I have to look at besides the fact that there's a node? This goes a little bit to Commissioner Joseph's touch. I mean, if you look at the future land use map, I see a bunch of R-9 and R-12. And this is an R-20 surrounded by a sea of R-9 and R-12. So why, explain that to me, why that's a good thing.
Again, it's an infill project, and they are calling for higher densities in this area, so it's not inconsistent with that policy direction. As it's been pointed out, the future land use map sometimes is misleading because this side is adjacent to a shopping center, villas, apartments.
Yeah, it's been there for a long time, yeah.
Yeah, and so it jumps out at you as out of place. However, because of its unique circumstance, it's adjacent to a church and a rehab center and a shopping center, gas station, office parks, you know, within a mile, within a half a mile. That was part of what supported our recommendation.
Okay. And I, there's a couple of things that have gone, and I'll give you a chance when I'm through. And one of the recent discussions that we had, I think Commissioner Green had alluded to it before, that, at least on his discussions with the MPO, that we're setting these low bars for our roadways, and then we're only just barely meeting that bar. And I've brought this up, and unfortunately, it's not really part of our purview, but I just do want to say, I have, I struggle when I'm told that a road has capacity when I know it takes me a half an hour to make the left turn. So that, it just, it gets me, and I, and I'm, the, I don't mean any offense to Mr. Henry, his study, when he brought up the fact that the additional trips were 1% of the capacity of the road. Is it 1% of the capacity of the road, or 1% of the available capacity? Because, I mean, I don't personally believe that there's actual capacity in the roads when you have to sit there at 5:00, like I said, for 30 minutes and make a left turn. I'm just stating it because it isn't anything that we can actually do, but I do have to drive through there every day. So I have, I have personal opinions associated with it.
Well, all I would simply add is that, well, two things. One, the study that we did of the Brandon area, looking at the east-west roadways, identified that there were not many areas where we can just increase capacity by widening roads. The existing development pattern is there. It's set. Now Lumston, actually east of Kings, was one of the few areas where there was potential to widen the roadway there.
And they could use it.
And the main things that the study pointed to from a transportation standpoint were trying to make greater connectivity, pedestrian facilities, and increasing transit. And if you'll recall, that study, one of the things that I identified was that potentially Oakfield Drive was a corridor to look at for bus rapid transit coming off the Crosstown Expressway out to the hospital. And that's, that's not altogether that far to the north of this. So those are some of the things that we looked at from a transportation standpoint. And then, I guess, from staff's perspective, you know, we're looking at a bigger picture that we have 700,000 people to accommodate between now and 2045, and the opportunities to infill, particularly in an area like Brandon, we know from that study, are fairly limited. There are not that many vacant and developable greenfield properties to build on anymore. And so to maximize those opportunities where we can helps us prevent further growth going outward and exacerbating our transportation problems in a different way. So.
Commissioner Green.
Just one, one word. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for our executive director. Works out. Okay, this isn't going away. It's here, and we're going to have to deal with it.
Yep. All right. Are there any other questions or comments from Commissioners? Signing down, I'll close public comment and understand a motion. I can't make it. I can't make it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for a finding of consistency for Hillsborough County Plan Amendment 18-12.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Green and a second by Commissioner Marino. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, aye. Motion carries. Commissioner Dix and Commissioner Dowdy against. With that, we're adjourned.
It's not just supervision. I think a lot of times people think supervision is the kids are playing, they're having a good time, and we're here. Supervision by proximity is not supervision. You've got to have active, within-reach supervision. And then if you're handing off your child to someone else to supervise, a couple of things need to happen. They need to make sure that they understand, you know, where your child is, their ability to know how to swim, and also, do those people know how to swim that you're handing your child's safety off to as well? That's really a key component.
As Floridians, we all have a role to play in water safety. Never assume someone else is watching your child, especially around water. You need to make sure your child has active supervision at all times. Giving your child the proper water survival skills at an early age can mean the difference between life or death.
The aquatic self-rescue, we teach them if they fall in the pool to roll over and float. That's for children that are six months to a year. But once a child can walk, he can also learn to fall in the pool, roll over and float, figure out where he is, and then flip over and swim to safety, and combine those swimming and floating skills to cover whatever distance he needs to get to get himself out of the pool. As soon as a child can crawl, they can get to the water alone, and they have the coordination at that point to roll over and float. So the sooner you teach it, the easier it is for the children to learn. And then the children never remember not knowing how to handle themselves in the water, which makes panic less likely. They learn to enjoy the water because they don't have anything to be afraid of, because they know how to handle themselves in it.